Twenty-eight minutes after ten, we'll come back into session. And we have our two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget assumptions. And we're budget officer and researcher.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
And Grant Rider.
And Grant Rider.
And, and, and.
Team, break them team.
There you go. There you go.
Okay. So, just to kind of set up this process. As budget officer, I act under the direction of the governing board to build a balanced budget for presentation to our budget committee. So this process today that we go through gives me some guidelines with information I received from managers and from you on building this budget. So, to be clear, the decisions or the things we're talking about today are not the final decisions. The process is this, and then the managers provide me information for their individual departments, and then we meet with our budget committee in May for approval then and final adoption in June. So all of those points are where the final decisions are made. Today is just discussion and guidance and kind of setting up the tone or the process for this year. So, with that, we talk about a few things annually in setting up our general fund budget. General fund is supported primarily by property taxes, beginning fund balance and some federal revenues. So again, most of what we're talking about today is a general fund impact. Some things are county-wide, but primarily we are specific to general fund. I have provided a memo that outlines some things that we'll discuss today and also two sheets that are the eighteen, nineteen general fund revenue and expense estimates. These are really rough draft numbers for general fund. It is in a balanced form right now. It includes a two-point-five percent salary increase. Our salaries are tied to CPI. The December CPI was two-point-two. So in our conservative ways, two-point-five is how this estimate was built. You can see that two-point-five equates, when it rolls up into benefits as well, it equates to about a hundred and one thousand dollars in general fund. A three percent health insurance increase, we are not sure of that amount yet. Jim Collins will be attending an insurance meeting at the end of February. He'll actually be given an estimate then that we can use and routinely is spot-on for us. So he'll have that information as we go through the process. Another assumption I made in building this estimate was an actual true three percent increase in current year tax revenue. That's very good news for us historically, or at least for the most recent history, we haven't been able to build in that three percent on current year taxes. It's something around one to two percent. Three percent is what is allowed by state law for values to increase for us to tax on. Above that is new construction. So if everything was held exactly the same, we could do a three percent. You could do something higher than three percent if we knew a lot of construction was going to occur in Lake County. We haven't been able to anticipate that. So you can see that a three percent on taxes is generating about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So just those two facts that I've stated already, what our taxes can increase and what our salaries might have to increase according to contracts, the benefit or the difference between those two is only about sixty-five, sixty-seven thousand dollars for all the other operations of general fund. It's important for me to also state that this is, you know, just continue to state this is.
Just that, but that's not inclusive of, because we don't know what our insurance is going to go against, so that sixty-something even goes down a little bit possibly. Am I correct?
Well, I anticipated a three percent health insurance increase. So depending on, yes, exactly, depending on where that number falls, I could be overestimating or could be underestimating on this.
Sorry to go sideways.
No, just a really rough draft. I mean, every year I kind of present this information in February, and by the time we are done with our process in June, it's changed significantly with better and new information that continues to filter in through all our departments and Congress. So let's talk about Congress. They play a significant role in our Lake County revenues through the PILT payment and also secure rural schools. While secure rural schools payments go to our road department, the PILT payment uses that as part of the formula in funding the county. The PILT payment is supposed to pay is almost the difference if that federal payment to secure rural schools is lower, the PILT payment should be higher. What has occurred this year is Congress moving through their budget process with just continuing resolutions without ever addressing the secure rural schools non-payment. So that PILT level staying stagnant is not enough to fund the program nationally. We're looking at potentially a thirty, you know, a thirty percent decrease, I would say. It is okay to state unless Congress takes action. There are some talks on the Hill about a prior year secure rural schools payment and holding counties harmless on their PILT payment. But until that action is actually voted on and signed into law, our practice has been holding that conservative estimate that conservative line. So these general fund revenue and expense estimates for next year include two PILT payments. One is this June's, June of twenty eighteen's payment, which I'm anticipating being around seven hundred thousand. So that rolls into next year's beginning fund balance. So that's how this estimate next year includes two payments. And then this includes that PILT payment being that same seven hundred thousand dollar level in twenty nineteen. Between the two, you're talking almost, well, accord, yeah, a budget deficit of about a half a million between the two of them. In real, actual payments, it's something more like eight hundred thousand between the two. So again, one vote and one law signature in Congress can really impact what we do here in Lake County. I don't know how to, I don't, I don't like to sit there and be like doom and gloom because that's not, the case has been that they do come through. They do come through.
But Ann, I think the reality we're faced with right now, while it's gloomy, it's reality.
Right.
We've worked on this enough to know that unless they take the appropriate action, we're going to see a shortfall this year, Jim, as you stated, and we're going to see one next year unless they fix that whole system.
And I feel that in my experience as budget officer, it is such an easier process to do a resolution, to bring in income, than to actually try to balance a budget in a deficit position. We're talking salaries and materials and services and projects that maybe are kind of in the works. And so I'd rather come in with good news than come in with pretty, you know, terrible bad news on a congressional action or lack thereof.
I totally agree because if we want to account for that money thinking that they're going to do the right thing, they're going to pass the right legislation, rewrite the rules so that the PILT folks have new rules to work with because they're held to the standard that, you know, we've talked before about hold all counties harmless that were, that hit the cap. Population primarily is the one. And when Ann's done the follow-up with them, they say that it doesn't allow for that if there's not enough to fully fund the program with what the prior year payment issue brings to us, then everyone has to take an equal cap. And for us, as you clearly stated, it's, isn't that a little closer to seven hundred and fifty? Regardless, it's, it's a significant head overboard budget before this year and would historically. Yep.
So I'm probably down to a better, but on this year, if it comes in at the seven hundred and to one point three or whatever, one point one, our transfer is, a quarter of a million is contingent probably not being fully funded, so that transfer would not happen. Correct?
Yeah, I'd rather come to you and make sure that that was the clear consensus and clear direction going, but that, to my knowledge and all the discussions I've been involved in, yes.
That's been our, our honest direction for every year we've done that.
And in our, in this case, our road superintendent is totally aware of what we've set and have quite a discussion on the likelihood of what would happen.
So that, that's, that's still, if it comes in at seven, that still would, that doesn't cover the three hundred and?
No, but we've, you know.
Three hundred and one.
Three hundred and fifty.
Three hundred and fifty.
But we've got the opportunity because we do have a large contingency. I mean, we have the means to have a balanced budget definitely by the end of the year without the sky falling. It's more about the future. And to Ann's point, I think Commissioner Winters, you've been right there, is there's no way under the sun that we should budget, which we believe in this case Congress will understand the right thing to do because at the end of the day, they obviously don't care relative to what it does to counties like ours. And so being conservative as we go into this, as we get into your budget assumptions, I think is the absolute right way to do it.
I like the word that Ann uses, the inaction of Congress.
Yeah.
I mean, the continuing resolution that held up by one person, just the federal government and everything is the responsibility, we're not showing any responsibility. So we talked about that.
Yeah.
So are we ready to run right on down to assumptions, Ann, or did you talk a little bit more?
Um, I would just point out, well, to, just to follow up a little bit on that, the beginning fund balance estimate for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, I will double-check that, but I do believe I've incorporated that transfer still. So that, that number can change on all kinds of things, so between now and June there yet.
Well, when you mentioned that the other day, the last budget, monthly budget reports, you did have it in there still.
Okay. So that, that number, you know, as we get closer to adopting this budget, even through the approval process, we'll solidify that. And hopefully we have these from Congress by then, that will change that too. The other thing to point out, one last thing to point out in this revenue and expense estimates, this is a balanced budget. The transfers that are listed here as expense estimates, you can see, are about three hundred and sixty thousand less than what we budgeted this year. The amount to the road department in this balanced general fund budget is thirty-five thousand. So I just, I wanted to point that out. Okay, so let's.
And before you go on, just to say for the record, just the fact that since we've been talking about this for the last several months, trying to be proactive, I'm very appreciative, not only of you, Ann, but of a lot of our departments. I mean, when we're talking about fairly minor expenses, there, you know, so many of them have recognized the potential shortfall, shortfall we're going to have in revenue. And they've been discussing, you know, about not doing this and not doing that before they've been given any kind of direction. And I think that's just absolutely wonderful. And I will say that Commissioner Winters has always said in the past, ever since I've been in office, you know, for department heads, to own their budget. And the fact that we have so many that are owning their budget and they're owning it beyond, well, it was approved, I should be able to spend it, but they're recognizing we need to be saving as much as we possibly can, only expending on things we need. And to that, Ann, and it's unfortunate, but there's only two of us here today, but I'm just going to simply say, I think the county commissioners need to set a little bit better example in general relative to owning our budget because even though we have a lot of fixed costs, we have some costs that we can definitely make different decisions on relative to expending in the materials and supplies. And it's a small amount, but if we're going to say that, and I know Commissioner Winters, just so we're clear here, you do, but whether it's myself or my other fellow commissioner that's not here, we need to own our budget and understand it and understand the message that we're displaying out there for all of, not just our departments, but for our county in general, because we have the luxury of having historically for the last number of years, a good revenue pool to work with to provide these services to the citizens. And we need to be sure we're actually providing service when we're expending money. So I'll get off my little bit of a soapbox sound.
Agreed.
I'm going to follow up that with an explanation of the percentage of property tax column on the expense estimate. If you were really to look at that, you would see it's greater than a hundred percent, and that's because general fund is not funded just with property taxes. But as a comparison, I think, you know, some things might kind of stand out to, I mean, I think we all understand it and we know general fund expenditures and where there's high-cost things and where sometimes there's not. But that kind of is an equal number there to show which department and how they're funded from general fund. I don't know that I did a great job of explaining that, but.
Well, maybe a different way to look at that, Ann, or to talk about it is if we didn't have other revenue besides our property tax revenue to run our general fund services.
We'd be in a world of hurt.
We'd be in a world of hurt. We'd have to cut fifty percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the amount of federal dollars, ground dollars, state dollars, all the other dollars that come in, we'd have to cut fifty percent of what we have if we didn't have it. I mean, that just sort of cut to the chase, that's.
Yes.
We have to delve, we have to say thank you in any time, not only to our taxpayers, but we do get dollars from many other places too.
Well, that's the challenge going forward, and I think that it's been the challenge, but the challenge going forward, and that's just, that's a great statement, Commissioner, is we not only need to live within our means, which we've been able to do without a lot of pain or any pain, but we need to think about at what point in time, and we have some things coming online possibly, in all likelihood, that are going to make those general fund dollars even greater. But we shouldn't, we shouldn't just build and utilize those just because we have them. We have to save. You know, that's, and we've been advocating that for quite some time now. And that's, that's the reason, right, to be honest with you, that's the reason that I think those of us that understand the budget aren't shuddering about what happens with PILT being reduced. We don't like it, but we've, we've been in a position where we've prepared ourselves for it. But as we go forward, there's got to be a huge awareness that significant new revenues need to be looked at as an opportunity to set ourselves up financially secure for the future and that we won't have any loss service. And I say, we, the three of us talking about this, we're talking to literally the choir because we understand that, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
You sure can't budget for just a year. You have to have a vision for the future.
Yeah.
We have to have a yearly budget, but within that you have to have sort of a plan.
All right. So let's, let's attack this memo. The first assumption is PILT. We've talked about it a little bit already. Again, for the seventeen, eighteen budget, we balanced our budget with a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar revenue figure there. Right now, the cash flow prediction is going to be something less than that, about seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. Our conservative way of budgeting, I would recommend we plug in that same seven hundred and sixty-five thousand for the eighteen, nineteen budget until we're told something different or until there's action in Congress.
I was seven hundred and so I, that's.
I think the seven sixty-five is.
Okay, I'm good with that, seven sixty-five.
Less than that.
The unappropriate ending fund balance to explain that Oregon budget law does not require you to budget that figure, but if you do, you are telling the public that it is a forced savings account for the following operations, the following fiscal year operations. So what you say is, if, let's say we're setting a nine hundred thousand dollar, which is what we've done historically, we're saying that that nine hundred thousand dollars is available on hand to operate July first of the following fiscal year. Again, the for savings part of it is the law says you can't touch that money unless there's a natural disaster, basically. So it truly is almost like a reserve account for operations of a long year. We have used nine hundred thousand dollars for several years. I skate this opinion every year, but as our fixed costs go up, that number may have to increase. What we see, though, is it's tough to make that increase occur and still balance our budget. So I, I'm okay with the nine hundred thousand dollars. Just understand that every year before those property tax dollars that coming in in October, it's, that number's getting smaller and smaller the last couple of years. So in this memo I state, our low balance during the month of October was seven hundred thousand dollars for general fund. Anyhow, nine hundred thousand is still what I'm proposing. I'd just like to give you more information about the why and how that number works for general fund. Nine hundred thousand. Contingency. We have used a two hundred thousand dollar level for several years. It has been a good number for us. Contingency is used for the unexpected, unknown things that typically arise during a fiscal year. What we have done a better job of is in our planning and our budgeting, we're accounting for more of those things that we used to think were unknowns. We have more information. We can plan ahead, so we have less unknowns during the year. I feel like that two hundred thousand dollar level has served us well. We know that this year, through the course of budgeting, there were some ideas floated that we weren't sure of yet, so we increased contingency. If we don't use that contingency amount, it basically rolls over into the beginning fund balance for the next year if all of the revenues and all of the expenditures occur as we had planned. So it's not fair to say that it's a true exact rollover. But contingency can act again as a little bit of a savings account for the following fiscal year when it's not.
So I'm going to suggest, Ann, Commissioner Winters, that we actually put in three hundred thousand. And the reason is, is we go into the, starting to collect all the data on our budgets and we know some of the things that we'll probably agree to today on fixed costs, contractual agreements from colleges to, to health insurance increases. But I think it's a lot easier also, as we get closer to budget time, to say, we do have a little bit more latitude for this or that by starting out there than to go the opposite direction. If we go at two hundred and we find out for sure, then where are we going to make it up? And it, I don't want it to make it sound like it's kind of a financial game plan, but I'd rather know that as you collect all the information, you start to see the true picture of where we're at with our budget, that we could probably reduce that to the more realistic figure. I think you captured that really well, that we don't have brand new surprises anymore, so our contingency typically doesn't get hit. But I'd rather start out at a higher rate personally.
We still have those potential for hits out there, though, from medical and jail to juvenile and on that part this year possibly, when railroad, you might have to.
Yeah.
Different things. So if we were to raise it up to the three hundred in estimates here, she would have to balance someplace, and that's a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, we've already talked about the two fifty that we've got in there.
We do not have two fifty in the eighteen, nineteen estimates in here. We do not. We have two fifty in the seventeen, eighteen cash flow.
Right.
Yes.
So I, I guess I'm a little bit shy on getting, going to three hundred, that could be a goal during budgeting time. I'm trying to follow your reasoning and get to the three, the three hundred, Ann.
Well, there's, there's nothing magic about that than having that ability as we start to put this together, as we go back and tighten some of these numbers down a little bit more. If we can't get there in this process, because we're just, you know, all these things are interdependent and we're only talking about it yet right now, but some of the figures we've got in there, we may be able to change. I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I'm going to suggest eventually here that we hold the line on those discretionary costs that we have in budget. We go to the zero increase. Some things we have to increase by contract. I don't want to get, I don't want us to get hung up here today, but.
Okay, so I, I think we're going to loop back around to this topic, so I'm going to, I'm going to plug in three hundred thousand as a goal. And then we're going to address, kind of come back to this on when we're balancing where some options.
Okay.
So the next, the next assumption is, is what kind of salary increase we budgeting in. According to our contracts, we allow between a one-point-five and a three percent based on the March all cities CPI W. Like I stated earlier, the December CPI W was two-point-two percent. So a two-point-five might be, you know, right, might be spot-on. It, it looks like it was increasing a little bit, and so that's why we thought we should go a little bit higher than the two-point-two. To be super conservative, if we're really going to follow that line, we would build in a three percent and know that that would be our highest exposure.
Yeah.
That we could actually see some kinds of savings, less than that, but again, a two-point-five with the associated benefits costs general funds just over a hundred thousand dollars. So another half a percent would cost another about twenty thousand dollars.
Well, within the union contracts, there's merit raises within those, not just the cost of living, but there's merit steps. We've now established department head steps. So to be able to follow the block we foreset and plan, we better, we better up that. To be able to have that opportunity doesn't mean that everybody gets this step, everybody moves up. But if we don't put up anything there, it's absolutely nothing for sure, or else we have to try to find someplace else. Are you following me?
Yep.
Because we've put that plan in place for department heads, so that's an impact that we need to be, have something there in the steps within the union contract.
And it is important, and I think if we can all communicate the same message, and I think this is where you're headed to, a three percent budget, especially with fine-tuning each salary and each line item and things like that, is just for informational purposes in a budget plan. There's other action that has to occur to make any salary increase anywhere throughout the county actually in writing. So just the budget alone is not the final action that occurs on county salaries. It's a, it's a planning piece. It allows for certain actions to occur, but just because you place it there doesn't mean that's what's going to happen.
So I guess the struggle, I'm sorting, sort of having, Ann, is a budgetary struggle is if we put it in the category salaries and then we don't, we don't give a merit raise, but it could get paid up within that category and over time or temporary part-time people, whatever, that, that money can disappear anyways, even if we don't give a merit raise. You following me?
Yes.
There's a way to protect so that only by action of, of merit raises that that money is spent. Do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, even on a, I guess there's not a commissioner action when they have a temporary hire rate?
No.
Is there not?
Not if they have the line item in there.
There's the category setup.
There you go.
So those, those positions are not commissioner approved. They're just department head approved.
We'd like for them to come before us and let us know if they're going to fulfill a temporary part-time position, but if it's budgeted, most of them are hired.
Okay. I would say this is a, this is an item that if we, if the direction is given here today to do a three percent, that we stay really in a lot of communication. that we stay really in a lot of communication with Jay in understanding what that CPI number's going to be, what that union contract is going to require us to do, and make that adjustment through the process as we know what that final figure's going to be.
Well, maybe in the outreach to department heads and they see numbers plugged in and can be communicated, that's the best estimate right now to get the front figure. And this number may, indeed, if we go to three percent, may go down.
And we would actually, we should add that number by the May meeting. We would know.
If I take care of a commissioner.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand your other part of it, too. It's not just cost of living, it's the other merit step increase.
For it to disappear within some department's budget, just utilized for normal operations.
Yep.
So anyways, a three percent, at this point, I think is appropriate myself.
Because that's our biggest, I mean, that's our greatest exposure to that.
Yeah. And then those step increases, Jay does work with that, too, and he builds those in if they're available. So that is part of, he does that. We'll work on that.
But that's the other dog of the, and we chase this dog forever. But, you know, once it's built in, if someone, if it didn't happen, I mean, if the money's available, there's something that may get spent. But we have to work on the concept that...
It gets right back to on in your budget scenario.
Yeah.
I do believe it's tougher to spend it in the salary category than it is in any other category. So I feel like there could be some communication made to require, you know, discussion.
Yeah. Yeah. It likes that we do really get it logged down.
So this year, I am just making a comment about materials and services and what our process historically has been on how we build these budgets. This software that we use has a very handy tool that allows me to copy numbers from one fiscal year to the next. I have done that in materials and services for quite some time. Last year, we went through a process to really kind of look at those materials and services categories and make sure they are in line with historical dollars. So I feel like that work has served us well. So this year, I am proposing that we truly do just copy over those materials and services numbers from one fiscal year to the next, knowing that if there's changes that are requested there by the department head, they give some kind of explanation. Let's talk it through, let's see what, like why, just, you know, reason out, which they do provide that when they're changing those numbers.
Okay. When you do that, and I want to go back to the commissioner's budget, I'm going to recommend Melanie at some point in time, and I don't know if she gets those figures from you copying this past, this year we're in to next year. But we're seeing potential. We're seeing change in the commissioner things after this, having this budget year. Don't know how much of a change, but we know I'm changing. I'm going to recommend that our materials and supplies under our different positions, position one, two, and three, that the figures for all three of those positions are the same.
Okay. Next topic is specific reserves. Oregon budget law allows local governments to establish one or more reserve funds to hold dollars to be equated and expended for financing the cost of any service, project, property, or equipment, which we have lawful power to perform. Not less than every tenth anniversary of the reserve establishment date, the governing body should determine whether the fund will be continued or abolished. And I meet that tenth year anniversary discussion with some of the things we do right here today and then through our annual budget process. I do not have dates of when some of our reserve funds were truly originally established. So I try to meet the goal and the intent of this law by making sure they're discussed every year. So I've listed here the funds that general fund supports. We understand and we know that there's other reserve funds that sit in our budget that we talk, you know, during our budget process, but these are the ones that general fund specifically supports. The first one is our facility reserve. That a hundred fifty thousand dollars is what we have sitting in there for seventeen eighteen. The purpose of that reserve fund is, you know, setting aside dollars for basically, you know, kind of any facility. Primarily, it's been the courthouse here, though, that needs significant improvements in the future. We have used some of those reserve dollars in the past to do updates and windows and heating and cooling systems and all kinds of work in this building. But last year for the seventeen eighteen budget, we set that level at a hundred fifty thousand. What number, you can give me a number today that adds to that reserve, or you can tell me the level you want it to be at. For instance, if you want it to stay at a hundred fifty thousand, I would not increase the reserve amount. It would be a zero additional dollar to the reserve, but the level would stay at a hundred fifty thousand. Or we can increase it.
So we have projects, probably within this next year, that need to be done. I would like to see those budgeted in and the reserves stay at a hundred fifty. If we're not able to get those budgeted, probably see that reserve go down. If they'll make those projects happen is where I'm at.
Yeah, I think that's where you're at.
Well, that was too easy. There's no argument or any, or discussion, no argument.
The next reserve that general fund didn't really support, but that we kind of monitor and hold for is the Fair Board Roping Club Facility, four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. This was donated, oh my goodness, I don't even remember the year.
It was donated, I think, pre-ME.
No, I think it was about two thousand and five or six.
Well, that's not too pre-ME.
It's been on the books for quite some time. We have kind of moved around where these dollars sit. I do and will continue to strongly recommend that these dollars sit in a non-operational fund to maintain the integrity and the cash balance of the reserve. So that's why it's sitting in our general fund projects reserve fund in its state of this four thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars in case ever there's a roping club facility that is constructed that we feel like these dollars could go towards. Just need to kind of keep in mind that these dollars are sitting there for that use.
The original, that came about way back when. It was roping club dollars that went to a building reserve, building fund reserve that hopefully may include roping, but it didn't have to be only for roping, that it could be the buildings out of the fairgrounds. Hopefully someday they'll tear down the ones we have and build a new one. And the people that donated that were very staunch on that staying there, as you know and I know. I would like to see, sort of, I'm both hatched right now, commissioner and Fair Board, that reserve start building so that if there ever was a grant out there that these dollars could help match a grant or something for that building. So if opportunity rises either through the Fair Board or through the commissioners to start building that reserve, I think it's something to look at because of, well, our fairgrounds are building are just about, they're old. So I think it's an opportunity that we easily don't think about, build a reserve there to match, but have to be to match a grant because to do any kind of building out there from huge dollars.
I think that's the real secret, is it's going to have to be a match or something.
Yeah. But there's some renewed interest from the public and others out there. So if opportunities through budgeting comes that we find any extra money to put towards the reserve, I would appreciate that thought invested by the board for that.
Well, I can't help but think we have three members in our DC congressional delegation that might want to be able to put their name on supporting the hundredth year of our roundup and the facility that goes with it, even if it's not built by name, which based upon construction times, it won't be built by name, but maybe they'll figure out a way to come up with some money.
No prayer for Ronnie. Mine's money.
I say this frequently, and it's really fitting for this type of event and work, that the iron might be hot, literally, for a county for facilities out there. To also add to this discussion, too, if there were some grant that came up and we needed a match, we do have the flexibility with the other facility reserve to use that dollar, too, because we're kind of non-specific, it's county facilities. So we say, please, let's find a grant right now, let's not even wait. So we have a match built there, or even funded reserve to do a match. I think we have the ability to be flexible.
Well, I don't want to speak for our director that's sitting back there, but we're trying to at least find a grant for the planning part of it. It's hard to go for the grant for the building if you don't have the planning grant done in that side of it. So that's sort of our stumbling block right now.
So technical assistance grants through forefounding or... Yeah, but they're limited. And they don't do planning grants, they only do technical assistance for active, get one, and community part.
But you'll talk on that thing. So, sorry to take this a little bit off course, but if we could have plugged in...
I'm just going to make a note, add if possible, but I'll keep it at the four, six, five, five level. The onsite program reserve, that ten thousand dollars is actually set by the state. They require us to have those dollars set aside in case we are no longer able to provide the onsite septic system inspections. They would take the program over for us and have that ten thousand dollars as seed money to start. So we don't need to add to it, but we cannot reuse it. So ten thousand dollars is just the amount that that is. The next one is the technology upgrade. In seventeen eighteen, we released the dollars that we had set aside there to help fund the assessors, software conversion for all of that tax accounting, which is a very expensive program and endeavor. The eighteen, nineteen fiscal year will be the second year of what I believe is a three-year process. The anticipated cost in eighteen, nineteen is a hundred and thirty thousand. I believe the nineteen, twenty dollar figure is less than that. And in eighteen, nineteen, I think we might start seeing some savings in the materials and services components of the software maintenance. But I don't have concrete numbers on that quite yet. I'm still trying to fine tune that information. For today, though, this technology upgrade reserve, this would be dollars that we're saying we want to set aside for nineteen, twenty, and the future. So sometimes it's tough to set aside a bit or any chunk of money for technology upgrades when every year we're kind of being required to make some expenditure in this area. It's nice to set aside some dollars, though, when we know we're going to have significant conversion costs somewhere. So I see both sides of this.
We had quite a discussion on it last year. I'd like to propose that we put ten thousand in there at this time, just as a placeholder.
At the minimum, ten. Technology takes in so many different things. I mean, I don't know what's being budgeted throughout, but we put in a camera system here several years ago with no planned upgrade or anything like that. And I don't know if there's going to be any budgeted with facilities or anything. Or that's just one little component of it, is we would also have need to add a few cameras and different things. So time flies.
And if it wasn't for the assessors program that we committed to you last year, which threw us off track on this technology upgrade line, I'm totally with you, Commissioner. I would, you know, I can't speak for the board in the future, but I would see after next year that we should be able to find our way to put in probably a hundred and twenty-five thousand and just continue on with that expense, but put it up there to start to build that, to your point, to get the reserve up to work as we replace whatever it is.
Well, I don't know our software and our business, our Treasury Department. I think that it seems like it's new, but it's already ten years old.
It is.
You know, and technology is just going to continue to be the need and to update. And so I, you know, we need to keep reserves there, I guess. I'm okay with ten for this year.
Well, we may find that through this process, we may find through the doom and gloom that we talked about earlier, that we can actually, even this year during budget time, increase that ten to something substantially higher.
So why don't we put the ten with a note to review through budget time?
Because we've typically...
Is that where you're going?
Yeah, exactly. Because we've always said we have it as just an on the record saying, we'll balance to contingency. Well, this might be the exception. We'll do some of our balancing if we have the luxury of having plus money to the technology upgrade line.
I'm good with that, so we're going to plug in ten there.
Yes. Next one is the fleet reserve. We have thirty-five thousand dollars set aside in the vehicle pool fleet fund. So that's there to replace the cost of one vehicle in the unforeseen, you know, because we get off track every now and then with our purchase plan if there's an accident or significant loss. So this is designed to replace a vehicle if that should occur during the fiscal year to keep us on track. I'll make this statement again, just to understand the difference between a reserve and a contingency. When we set it aside as a reserve, it requires a more significant process to release it for expenditure that year. It's truly a savings account to the public. So it really is just sitting there. If that unforeseen circumstance occurred that we need to release that reserve, it would just require a little bit longer of a public process to get the authority to extend it.
I've always been supportive of that one. With that said, if our budget went the other way, so it's really tight, that is one that I'd come back and look at, is reducing, I would think. We have had that. We have lost a vehicle at one time, and it should happen at any time. But that's one I'd flag that we should always come back and reduce that amount or reduce it if things are so tight that we can't get that balance.
I, once again, I agree on that because we're not taking away from our fleet program. We're just taking away potentially from that unexpected emergency that comes up.
It's an insurance program.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any ideas for other specific reserves?
That's a good question.
Just throw it out there. There's something, I think the camera system does fall into technology. We are budgeting a little bit every year to replace or to maintain that system, but not in case there's a significant replacement of the whole system. You know, we're not budgeting that expense. I don't know if, I don't think they're necessarily reserve items. We do know of some outstanding issues the county's facing in a couple of different arenas, whether it's public health or the railroad or, you know, all kinds of things like that. I don't know that we'd set aside a reserve to meet those kind of unknowns. It's more of a contingency item. So maybe that three hundred thousand dollar goal is where we might want to stay anyway because of outstanding issues. I don't know of any other specific reserves.
I haven't really put much thought into it, and I can't.
I haven't, not at this time. I don't, personally, I don't know.
I do talk about the assessor software update. I have that plugged in, our estimate for eighteen, nineteen. I don't know of any other multi-year projects. I mean, the airport is something different, kind of got that planned and ongoing. Are there other multi-year projects? And the information will come into me from department heads, but sometimes it's nice to open it up in this venue, too, just so that it's a heads up. I know, talking about the facility, too, there are dollars even in this estimate for transfers for this courthouse facility and then continuing upgrades of different... for this courthouse facility and then continuing upgrades of different floors. So there are some dollars planned for, for this facility in the phases of our kind of updates.
Mm-hmm.
That's a multi-year project, and as far as I know, it'll be furthermore ongoing almost, there's always something that needs to be, facility maintenance wise. Okay, next, oh man, admin fee calculations.
Have you got a new form of one?
We do not have a new form of that, and I did not even give you the hordes of information that sometimes I have on this topic, Commissioner. So let's just talk it through. The admin fee is really truly an indirect cost allocation that has been reviewed by different federal and state agencies. What it's designed to do is be fair and equitable, we really like those terms, across the county for services that general fund provides. For instance, not every department can afford to have a payroll tech in their department. And so we have one accounting specialist that does payroll and accounts payable county-wide. We figure out what that cost of that service is, and we allocate it back out across all funds and departments fairly inequitably. The things that can change admin fees are, number one, the cost of the service. So talking about business department or treasurer department accounting software, it would impact admin fees. And so I'm leery about ever increasing my cost, because I know how that cost impacts county-wide, not only our property taxpayers, but just county-wide department heads and funds. So the other thing that can impact admin fees is a smaller pool of customers, to say it that way. So we saw that when we no longer providing service to mental health, but our costs remain the same, you're sharing that cost over a smaller number of participants. So everybody's admin fee kind of went up to absorb that smaller pool. We do have the potential for that moving forward. So those admin fees, again, there are the treasurer's department, business services, county council, the commissioners department is included in that, but not the general cost of government. It truly is more some like minute-taking time and some conference and committee time that's included there. And then the, one of our bigger drivers right now is technology. I mean, that is a big cost driver on admin fees. Every year, I try to get really good information from our IT department, and we try to allocate that back out almost specifically to how many devices are supported. So I feel comfortable, in fact, that one is actually, it's really nice to have true numbers and data to figure out how to allocate that cost back out. It's just a high cost in increasing, you know, as we see the need to protect not only our employees, but our citizens with software and systems and things like that. So I don't see any significant changes over the current fiscal year we're in on next year's admin fees, other than that cost pool, that share. If we lose some people out of the pool, some admin fees need to go up.
So in our technology for services, ACTET contract, that's all part of?
Yeah, the ACTET service contract, we are spending about $30,000 to $40,000 a year on replacing equipment, so that cost goes up. We also allocate out phone and internet, but that's pretty easy to go back to how many users are on getting that service.
But the contract itself, we haven't had that, and I'm not exactly sure how to go about having that discussion, but we did say when we went into this expanded program of services, that we literally did it at some point in time, it made sense, it's really close to making sense.
Yes. I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
And yes, I think budget time is always a good time to kind of really look at what we're doing, you know, if there's, you know, if there's other ways, if it makes sense, but it is included in the admin fee right now, for sure.
Yeah.
Oh, and I can talk more about it during the budget time if you want, but there's the admin fee discussion that we took, we turned out. And last, well, not last, but another topic, are there any discussions of new positions or other additions that are kind of being floated around that you want to give me a heads up now, or just let the process kind of keep moving through?
No, I've, I've not aware, I think we need to just see if something's, like you were going to propose something important or makes sense. Yeah.
Okay. So this next topic is balancing general fund. As we are stating repeatedly here, this year, depending on information that comes in from managers, it may not be in a balanced state or easily balanced by me. So what I'd like to get today is kind of a way to balance general fund by consensus through this discussion. You know, and it can go both ways. I can find out that maybe I'm in a surplus position once all the managers give me information. I don't know that that's going to be as likely as that I'm going to be in a deficit position once I get all the information from managers. So what I'm showing here are options in where I go first, and in the order I go to balance general fund.
Well, I think it's going to make a difference, Anne, if I disturb you right as to where we're balancing, because we're to the plus or we're in a need.
Yeah.
Because I wrote my numbers down based upon that we're short in the need to balance.
More likely than not, that's the direction we're going to be.
Yeah, and quite honestly, I think we're going to have to look at the situation, but I, I'll just tell you what I put down right off of that. Starting at the top was three, four, two, one, with how I listed it, but I can make the case for changing that around a little bit.
So number three would be my first priority, or where I go first to make up a deficit?
No, no, out to the side of your numbers, one through four.
Yeah.
I put contingency three, transfer to fund reserves four, transfer to fund operations two, materials and services one.
Okay, okay.
But it depends upon what the shortfall might be, and it depends, it depends on a lot of stuff.
Okay. It's not as easy as I wish, huh?
Well, I mean, that, originally, I just reversed the order, but, you know, it would depend on which reserve, it would depend on, I mean, that we thought, it would depend on whether or not in our building program, facilities program, we come in and fund projects outside of the reserve that are going to do everything we want. We don't see a biggie for the reserve to be at 150. And we have $50,000 shortfall, and we said, well, then we should transfer out of that reserve fund.
Okay.
I can clearly, I don't know what you're thinking, Commissioner, perhaps, but it definitely changes if it's on the plus side as to where those monies go, because I don't.
Well, I can imagine.
Yeah.
So, so thinking in the deficit mode, transfers to fund operations, if that was my number one, the easiest one there is a transfer to the road department. What other ones off the top of your head would that possibly get?
The fairgrounds, veteran services, public health, and others.
And the road department, as important as it is, is the only one that I would want to consider up there as number one. The rest of them are too important, I mean, it's important too, and I don't want to be on record saying it's not, but.
They have other options of them, I think short-term needs of other costs.
I am working on other ways to fund them.
So that, that's the uniqueness of trying to do this, is I'm in the same place, is that one there, because we've already stated, that is the one to go away, or whatever, so that one's easy. But then we'd have to look at all those other ones, um, transfers, to see what that would trigger, you know, as far as even possibly risks or anything, so.
So I can make notes, just off of conversation, but I understand that, yeah, that transfer to the road department could be a spot I can go to balance general fund that others maintain.
Well, we've already had the discussion just a little bit ago, we put contingency at $300,000 for that road reason, you know, if we need to, we lack on that, we can't. So we've got those two areas.
Well, we, we haven't settled contingency, we, that's what your thought was, we was coming back to this one.
Well, because I knew it was here as an option to balance general fund.
Well, I should clarify that, you were right, Commissioner, you didn't agree to that. I just said, that's a good starting.
So, so transfer to fund operations is that, the large transfer is my number one to balance to that, reducing that or completely going away, which it looks like it's going to completely If contingency, if we did set contingency at $300,000 in, I would think that one there would be one to go to, because my number's $200,000, because I think we've done such a better job budgeting over the years, that $200,000 in contingency is a fair number. We still have potential to go in there, but that's my thought. The reserves, you know, I like for you and him, if there's not money to fund some specific projects, I want to talk about one in specific, and the steps out here, they have to be fixed, then would I be wanting to reduce the reserve to make that project happen? Because that's a safety issue that we have to, you know.
Totally agree.
So it's really hard for me to.
Well, it's going to depend on the circumstance, what the, what the issue is we're talking about as to where that happens, because you just hit the nail on the head when you talked about funding operations, transfer to fund operations, but I'm going to go back to materials and supplies, and I'm going to say it's a drop in the bucket, literally, but by balancing out through Melanie, the commissioner's travel line item, the general travel line item for those three positions, that's $3,000. Last year, we found, we haven't, as far as I know, I look at those monthly reports, we haven't hurt anybody, and we made it very clear, even though we don't need to get into the discussion as to how we went about getting there, but people were going to be held harmless if they hadn't been above and beyond, but they historic run. And I don't think, even though we're going to copy the numbers, I don't want to get bogged down on this particular area, but I think we still have some, and it's might be minor, but it might add up to $20,000. So while that might not be a big project or a big savings to make up, some deficit that we have in the overall budget, it's a good place to get more precise than what we have been. And we got partly there last year, and it was on historic numbers, but I think we can get a little further along the line. But at the same time, the other operational one is the big one, that will allow us to do some other things that are bigger ticket price.
You guys have a calendar in front of you there. I believe budgets are due back in my office on April 9th. I would, can I look at your calendar? I guess what I'm proposing is maybe there's potential to bring some information into a work session before I get budget books out to the committee the last week of April, or first week of May.
So you're going, I was going to ask that question.
So I might be able to get on your work session on April 17th?
Yeah.
I think that'd be excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What, let me look at some potential concerns with that according to like the budget committee and its specifics, if we get down to talking about specifics there as far as that meeting. But let me look at that, that's a potential, again, way for me to get consensus on balancing the budget April 17th.
I think that would be good, and we should have a few more. People we further along within their budgets, you'll hear more potential requests out there, different thoughts, hopefully potential savings, some of the department heads are there, and this is where I can reduce, hopefully.
So something we haven't, so I don't forget this thought that I got running around in my head, we haven't had the discussion, we did talk earlier fairly clearly about open requests, and this time we're going that route, but to your point, Commissioner, whereas we need to make sure that we get some of these projects, like the front steps, built into those budgets, because they won't be coming before us for an open request, or at least I don't believe they will be. We haven't even had that discussion here today, but.
So I, I think Dave's under the, like, that is a project that he feels like had been approved, he's just moving forward with it.
But it's not just that, I mean, that was the example, there could be other things there.
I sort of look at the open request with a little bit of difference outside of the normal operations, deferred maintenance for other departments and other things like that, so I guess we have sort of alluded together, such as the Artimov project, there are different ones over the years, we're careful. It would be nice if we didn't have any of these, or any sort of open requests, but I don't think we're going to.
Well, I think that's where we all came to that conclusion, is that if the worst-case scenario happens with revenues, we're going to be okay, but we're not going to have any additional money for anything, but just general operations.
And planned, planned improvements that we kind of have in the works.
Wait, I mean, just, I mean, I do want to speak for you, but the open request, we're not going to have any, but our airport, I mean, our water system out there is in dire need of, you know, fixing, it's an enterprise fund that doesn't have the revenue stream for that project, you know, we've got the fairgrounds, and we always talk about, you know, deferred maintenance and this, so I'm hopeful that maybe within a year or two, we're able to get back, we're able to knock off some of those deferred maintenance things out there that we've been so fortunate to have.
Well, I need to get an update since you mentioned that from Dave, because they came before me the other day, I was the only one here, and we had a big break, and I said, we need to go forward and fix that.
Yeah, I don't know what, I just know that we've had, but.
Well, this one was going under the building.
Yeah.
I said, we need to get that fixed.
Yeah.
Not just the break, but the multiple breaks.
We have, we have a naval airbase is what we have.
No, we totally understand, if I were having, but I did give them the thumbs up to move forward to get fixed tonight, so.
Well, and sometimes you may end up having to support that through a contingency thought that Dan said, so. So we do need to set that contingency numbers up, the last thing we have to do, and.
Yeah, so the way, I mean, the way I'm thinking about it right now is the, a goal could be $300,000, but yet, given the need to balance general fund, it may be an option that is reduced after some other things are looked at to balance general fund.
Well, I, I have to be honest, I have a struggle with moving that up to $300,000, and we're telling everybody else to be conservative, we want everything to reduce, and then we're up in contingency by $100,000. I mean, that's sort of like telling everybody to reduce everything, but we're going up this, and so I'm struggling with that personally. I think the goal, I think we should set a 200 in goal to get up to.
But I'm not sure what we've told people in this discussion to reduce. We went back to your concept on your budget, we're going to have fixed costs that rise.
Well, we haven't asked you to reduce, we're saying that we're going to have reduced to $100,000 by about between the two years of 600,000, 700,000, but we're going to raise contingency $100,000. So we're telling everybody to be really conservative, maybe not reduce, but we're going to have no open request to all these other things, but we're going to up contingency $100,000.
I, that's. I, that's, quite honestly, Commissioner, that's how I see it, because that's our only avenue to go back. We didn't anticipate last year that Hill wouldn't be funded at one point one. And we're going to run out of options to balance our budget if we don't build in some, I call it, or savings. And that's where that's at, that's, I hear what you're saying, but that is real. We have to, we have to provide for some, some place where we can also, and it'll probably happen before the budget's approved, you know, that that number would change. If we don't start out there and we build everything, this is just my thinking, I hear what you're saying. But if we build it to two hundred and we find out we're a hundred thousand short, where are we going to take that from? We're going to drop it down to a hundred thousand?
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying two hundred thousand. The goal would be, as Anne says, and you said, three hundred thousand, but our number's two hundred thousand, the same as was last year. What we end up is when we get done budgeting, you can see where it ended up this last year. So, so we do have a buffer there. So if we have to reduce to keep it at two hundred thousand, it'd be going back to that priority list as we was just talking, whether it's transfers for operation, it's transfers to reserves, materials and services. But our bottom number would be the two hundred thousand, is where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I can, I can get, I can definitely get there for this, at this stage of the process. We're not going to have, based on what our best information, we're not going to have the discretionary funds that we've had last year or the year before, based on where we think this is going to shake out. So, you know, whether we just put that back or not put it back, but just set it on two hundred thousand and build that other hundred thousand into the budget, or we'll find out if we've got extra funds that we can go to, whichever of those four we want to go to.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, I don't know, I guess contingency is probably as good as any place. It's what you're, where we've had the transfer line item as our buffer. You're trying to think of a place where there can be basically the savings for that buffer if it gets worth the following year. This where you're, am I following where you're at?
In part, because those four priorities, to me, if we move it to two hundred thousand, we almost cross out contingency as a place that we make it up. We have three then that we can make it up as we go through this early stage of budgeting. That, that's where, that's what my thinking is, that gives us, you know, the first go-to place to say we're not going to hit any of these others, to go get a hundred thousand dollars if we're short that much and we're still comfortable with the two hundred thousand dollar contingency. But if we move it to two hundred today during the budget assumption process, if Anne comes back to us in April, I would suggest that if she says we're eighty thousand short, we're not even going to consider contingency as a place we can make that, we're going to immediately go to at least one of those other three, if not some other place, who knows?
Yeah, if that's, yeah, if I start with a two hundred thousand dollar and we want to save two hundred thousand, I'm eighty thousand dollars short. You're right, we're going to go somewhere else.
We've got to go someplace else, we just cross that out as an option.
Yeah, which is kind of an essence of what happened last year, so that's, and then to take this just a little bit further thinking this out, and I think this, I feel like this is where we're headed or what we're talking about too. During our budget meetings themselves, when you think about how those meetings like filter through and what happens to those and how we listen and discuss and kind of get all that information, I feel like it's always easier and the process feels better to everybody if we are able to provide dollars instead of sucking dollars back in. So if, if we start with two hundred thousand and I can't balance the budget and now I'm less than two hundred thousand and we start those meetings, we're having to pull dollars in, which I think Dan's trying, you know, that's what he's saying. If we can start higher than that and still get a balanced budget doing some of these other things, then during the meeting process, there can be more flow of dollars going back out towards requests that come in.
I get it.
Okay.
Does, does our department head's elected officials' employees get it? That's where I'm...
I, I hear that part of your discussion, I definitely hear it.
That, that's where I was going. So if we went with assumptions at three hundred thousand and ten thousand dollars for the technology upgrade, that's a hundred and ten thousand dollars that you have to find someplace right now to get back in balance, back in balance. So there's going to have to be a reduction or more revenues someplace, correct?
I have to look at the transfers I've maintained in here, I feel like the only, I might have impacted the transfer to fund one oh three and the road department, those were the only two. So if we're funding, yeah, the vehicle pool, that funding stayed the same in this estimate.
So, so we're already having to take from someplace to balance?
The hundred thousand for contingency, contingency for sure.
Yeah, so we're already doing it?
But I don't, again, don't have all the numbers coming in on, you know, that any fund balance is going to change.
So it can be, it can be offset my revenue and some of the expense too, so...
Yes.
Okay, I get it.
Well, it's, it's merely a placeholder at this moment in time. And I would say that, I think the idea of an April seventeenth meeting together, we would definitely firm all that and they completely change.
Okay.
Okay. And so just to be clear, again, for everybody in the audience and here too, even though we are saying some specific dollars here, this is not the official action to set this budget.
Totally just...
April seventeenth, April seventeenth, I'll reiterate that again as well.
Yeah, that follows budget, that's why you're saying so gracefully.
Thank you for...
So going over assumptions, at Hill, seven sixty-five, ending fund balance, unappropriated ending fund balance, nine hundred thousand, contingency goal of three hundred thousand, salaries three percent, facility reserves a hundred and fifty thousand, broken facilities stay the same onsite, technology upgrade, ten thousand, with a notation there, we may look at more or less depending on it. Fleet reserve stays the same, with a note there, if things are tight, you can come back and look at that. And then I think the balancing general fund down at the bottom, I think there's enough discussion that, that you're going to be working on that before the, we never said anything in stone there, Anne, but I I think that the April seventeenth meeting will probably impact that. Does that sort of cover everything?
It really does, and I'm looking forward to that April seventeenth, because a lot of this, if you're right, this was a great discussion today. One of the, probably the best one we've had on this process.
Well, let's hope that, you know, again, I like to, like, I'd so much rather provide good news. So let's hope April seventeenth, I come in here and say, good news.
What, what is tax day?
Well, this year it might.
Surely we're not getting tax day for me.
Well, best case scenario, I mean, let's, let's just have that as a final, at least the final statement I make on this. I still have faith that through the congressional process here in March, and Anne's talked about that early on, that we'll see full funding, that we know is full funding at Hill and we will see a supplemental type payment for two years in the rear, the makeup for SRS and that we will be having a much jellier conversation in April about where we're at than what we're currently...
And that changes the whole tone of this...
Oh, well, you said it, eight hundred thousand dollars, I mean, for this year, it's four hundred thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand to the good, and then, you know, we would still, I assume we would still continue with our agreement with our our road department, we'd still be able to make that payment without any problem and we would be truly on the plus side and we might even start to have, well, a little stop there.
That's okay, that's okay, it can happen, it definitely can happen.
So if you have assumptions, thank you very much, Anne.
Yes, Anne.
It's the one time that assuming does not, yeah.
Well, good though.
But again, I'd much rather come in with good news.
All right, thank you, so we still have minutes for tomorrow and then just a quick overview of the second amendment.
No, it is a quick timeout, I think.
Quick timeout, is that a big one? Always super light and fast.